Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the October fifteenth, twenty twenty four Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meeting to order and it is seven oh four P M. And if everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. A reading of meeting notice. The note, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mister Cruz, if you could please call attendance.
It's Miss Walker. For the record, Miss Walker's absent. Mrs. Priscilla?
Present.
Mrs. Farrar?
Present.
Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mister Boone?
Here.
We have Quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, I need a motion, please, to move, uh, to vote on or approve our, uh, meeting. I can't see my, sorry. Approve our minutes from our September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four meeting. Motion by Mister Boone, seconded by?
Second.
Mrs. Farrar, are there any discussions? Mister Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mrs. Prisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mister Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to skip around a little bit on our agenda and we're going to start off with our student report with Ryan Go. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, uh, good afternoon. So as the school year continues, VHS continues to be extraordinarily active. So since our last meeting, there's no doubt that a lot has happened. So, um, on Monday, September twenty six, VHS held our back to school night where the parents of our students got better acquainted with their children's high school environment, classes, and staff. Uh, VHS will be administering the PSAT tomorrow for grades nine to eleven. The PSA not only, PSAT not only serves as great practice for the SAT, but also as the qualifying test for the National Merit Scholarship. In fact, two of our very own VHS students, both seniors Owen Chanana and Isabella Lambert, have been commended with letters of commendation by the National Merit Scholarship Program. A recognition earned with the outstanding achievement of scoring in the top three percent of the one point five million students who took the PSAT. I'd like to congratulate both Owen and Isabella for such a major academic achievement, but also for exemplifying the talent that we can continue, we should continue to foster here. Uh, the National Honor Society has begun accepting requests for tutoring in any subject or grade level from K to twelve. Such requests for tutoring will be forwarded to many of our incredibly qualified student tutors who are eager to help improve the education of others. I strongly encourage any student in need of assistance to get a tutor who can provide not only academic help, but could introduce a role model to connect with. So to parents, we encourage you to support your child in seeking out such resources as our tutors as they aren't just knowledgeable, but also committed to fostering a positive learning environment. Last week was our spirit week where students stressed up to the various themes to show school spirit and grade level hallway decorating where each state, each grade decorated their respective hallways following their specific grade level theme and color. This all culminated in our first pep rally of the year on Thursday where we had fun celebrating our fall sports and activities and especially the respective seniors with maximum, for lack of a better word, pep. I'm sorry. I believe, uh, junior class did. Athletics wise, VHS Fall Sports continued to go strong with victories alongside senior nights being celebrated in girls volleyball, field hockey, and soccer, among others. Uh, the indomitable spirit of Verona continues to rage as exemplified by last Thursday's football game, which showcased a victory for Verona on a senior night that only, not only celebrated our football seniors, but as well as our cheerleader and band seniors as well. Uh, in the world of performing arts, the VHS marching band, the marching maroon and white continues to succeed in competition, taking second at both the Randolph and West Orange competitions. This Saturday, we look forward to our Verona Festival of Bands featuring six competing marching bands from other high schools and an exhibit, exhibition performance by our very own. Funnily enough, I will be excusing myself after this to attend rehearsal in preparation for such a grandiose event for our music department. And lastly, the Student Council is holding our very own fall themed VHS homecoming. On the thirtieth of October from six to eight P M., tickets can be purchased in the lobby of the high school for students after school tomorrow and Thursday. That is all. Thank you.
Repeat that, um, the homecoming, what is that, what is that event again? When is that taking place? October thirtieth?
Thirty of October from six to eight P M.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. As always, does anyone have any comments or questions?
Thank you so much, Ryan. Um, is the homecoming for, just for students or is it for the whole community?
The homecoming is for VHS students, so like?
Okay.
Anyone outside of the school and like any, uh, high schools outside this, like not enrolled in VHS cannot?
Yeah, okay. Okay. And then also, um, for the tutors that you mentioned, is that available for, um, any grade level or is it just for high school?
Uh, any grade level, K to twelve.
And then how do, um, how would parents get in touch with?
They, uh, reach out to Doctor Tim Burrow.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a Google form that I think he sends out.
Yeah.
Which tells every information out.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you and enjoy your practice and we'll see you on Saturday. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I think you're gonna give Reese a run for her money.
Moving on to our agenda, we will go to our superintendent report with Miss Diane Di Giuseppe.
So, uh, we had a professional development day yesterday with our teachers for the half day and, um, uh, we had, we had to do a little diversion. We have a little, we were supposed to be training, uh, in Atlas, uh, Rubicon. Um, little glitch, but we're gonna get back on track with that. Um, so we, they, the teachers worked on continuing the work that we started last year with the unpacking standards and working on, um, uh, professional development, uh, uh, different opportunities. It was a choice day and I think, uh, I hope the teachers enjoyed, uh, having the ability to choose what they wanted to take part in. So, good news, VHS was named, uh, once again to the AP School Honor Roll from College Board. And this, um, honor is recognized as schools that have done outstanding work to welcome more students into the AP, into AP courses and supporting them on a path to college success. And I know I've said, uh, several times in my, uh, two, two years and two months here, two years and four months here, that, uh, research does show that students who take, uh, AP courses and exams are more likely to attend college and to graduate college on time versus, uh, extending college or transferring and, and changing majors, which extends, unfortunately, the cost of college for their parents or themselves if they're paying it out of pocket. Um, students who enter four-year colleges with credits from Advanced Placement accelerate their path to graduation and build confidence for college success. And even those students who don't earn college credit, AP coursework provides early exposure to college level work and contributes to college going, uh, to a college-going school culture. And it's, it's always kind of a, um, a a balancing act when we know AP is a money-making organization, right, to promote that, but it does have those benefits of, of preparing students for college-level work. And we know that, uh, students that take AP, um, AP, uh, level courses do actually do better in high school as well. It's just, it's a much more rigorous environment. Uh, along those notes, uh, we have, there are three awards given, um, or three scholarship levels for students that take AP. Uh, there's the AP Scholar, which is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Remember, the AP test scores are from one to five. A five is the highest score a student can get. A one is the lowest score. So if students receive three or higher on three or more AP exams, they are considered an AP Scholar. We had forty-nine students, uh, uh, at Verona High School that took AP in May last year that made the AP Scholar. Uh, AP Scholars with Honors, these are granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point two five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. You keep in track of all those numbers? And we had seventeen students, uh, that, uh, qualified to be an AP Scholar with honors. And then AP Scholar with Distinction are granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. And we had thirty-seven students that qualified for, uh, Scholar with Distinction. So we're very proud of our students that are stretching themselves to engage in, uh, in this college-level learning uh, in high school and doing really well. Uh, as Ryan indicated, it was Spirit Week across the district, but it was also the Week of Respect, um, which is dedicated by the State of New Jersey since two thousand and three, um, to focus on, um, anti-bullying, uh, activities. So I do want to highlight Brookdale because they closed out the Week of Respect last week with their second annual Color fundraiser. As a school community, students work together to reach their goals and earn some class rewards along the way. The Color Run, students, uh, at the Color Run, students practiced perseverance and got plenty of exercise while enjoying their time together as a whole school. Donations will still be collected through the end of the week, but as of this morning, the students raised thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. Yes, it's incredible. Uh, with Brookdale's profit being thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty, so that the company does take a small bit to organize. The SCA will use these funds, uh, for some big-ticket items such as new light speed amplification systems for all the classrooms and to continue to better, uh, their outdoor classrooms. So they have a lovely outdoor classroom at Brookdale and the SCA is buying a, um, like a canopy so that they can get more use out of it, um, uh, when it's hot. It'll be shady or protect them from any drizzle or whatever. So, um, it will also be able to provide students with other invaluable experiences. A huge thank you to the Brookdale parents who volunteered and, uh, volunteered their time and donated. Um, there's like something flying around. Yeah. Um, so it's across the elementary world, uh, we had assemblies and, um, read alouds that had to do with anti-bullying. Uh, F N Brown really focuses our conflict resolution on respect. As does, uh, Forrest and Lanning. The middle school, um, had, uh, had specific color days to promote unity and camaraderie. And the high school had their Spirit Week as well as doing respect for yourself, respect for others, respect for diversity, respect online, and respect for your future. So, um, next week is, um, anti-violence, school violence weeks. Uh, we'll see more happenings along those lines. And, um, that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I, I just have one question and, and before that I do have a comment. That's, that's awesome on the fundraiser and I really love the community's involvement in that. So kudos to everybody involved there. Um, on the AP, um, data that you're providing, um, talked about how it's well-known that students perform better, uh, or graduate from college on time with performance in the AP. I'm, I'm curious to know, do we have any additional data on the Supa performance? Um, is that?
Good question. Um, for those who, those of you that don't have kids at the high school and have not delved into what Supa is, um, Supa is, uh, Syracuse University, uh, Project Advance. And we do offer college courses, uh, here in district through Supa. Um, we have at least the gender, I put the gender and literature, gender and literature is offered.
That's correct. There's something else as well.
It used to be psychology, but now that's, it's not. We now offer AP Psych.
Okay.
So, um, I don't, I, I don't think there's another one. I know they were talking about potentially bringing, um, two more in. I will check on that. I mean, I would imagine it's a, it's a college course. It's probably lending itself to the same kinds of, of successes, but AP does their own study and publishes their own research.
Of course. Yeah. I, I just anecdotally, the, uh, feedback that I hear on the, on the Supa has just been nothing short of outstanding. Um, and it is a great opportunity and I would just, I would love to see data and I know you don't have it, of course, that, that further bolsters that relative to.
You know, Syracuse is a big university and that's a program that, um, is very widespread across the Northeast. So I can imagine, um, they probably have their own data. I can, I can find out for you.
Oh, great. Thank you.
I think it was either last meeting or the one before, maybe we, we approved the dual enrollment. What schools are we collaborating with for that?
Montclair.
Is it just Montclair?
Montclair, yeah. And, and Syracuse.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, we have committee reports. We just have athletics, um, that met. I will take that. Um, since Ryan spoke about most, uh, Cheer for a Cure was at Foley Field. Our cheerleaders had a competition. They came in first for best stunting. That was on October eighth. Uh, National Walk to School Day was, um, October twenty-nine, October ninth, I'm sorry. Our twenty-five student athletes went to their hometown elementary school to walk with the students from elementary school. On October twenty-third is Cheer for a Cure, uh, cheering, not a competition, but it's a cheering event with the Verona Cheerleaders and our Eagle Program. And that will be right out here at the Verona High School. Unfortunately, we'll all be away for the, um, school board, so we won't be able to attend that. Uh, I would like to give a shout out to the new, um, program that started, uh, the Verona Sports Media run by Shaq. Um, the kids are doing a great job, uh, video and taking pictures of this, uh, sports teams and I think they're also doing the band. So kudos to those students, um, their Instagram reels and what they've been doing is really great. So congrats to them. Uh, let's see. We are in discussion again with possible flag football as a possible club as a long-term goal. We're just in the discussions about that. Our band team, like Ryan mentioned, one came in second at both their past competitions. Uh, I went to the West Orange Competition last week and kudos to those music band parents. They put a lot of work into, to everything and this, our students really work so hard. So great performance and I'm looking forward to this weekend, um, here at Verona High School for the band festival. Um, all our sports teams and bands also had their senior nights. Let's say field trips on December seventh, there's the Model U N trip, uh, at the Master's School in Dobbs Ferry, New York. And that's about it. I think we are looking forward to getting the new board policy on spectator code of conduct, nine one six three.
And I also wrote a policy that I'll be sharing with the Policy Committee on the procedure to, uh, request a new athletic team to be added to the, to our slate of, of athletic teams.
Right.
So that we have a formal process.
Very good. And for personnel, we're looking, I guess, for an assistant track and field coach, an assistant boys lacrosse coach. And I can't, did I miss anything from our meeting? Okay. That's all I have. Any questions?
The flag football, is that boys, girls?
It's a girl's sport. And it's a spring sport.
Right. I, I remember the, I think, the, I, I remember the, I think the new football coach has contacts in Montclair.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that some of the concerns are, um, field space. Uh, the spring is hard to find a field space. And, um, the number of students that we have, can we spread, uh, our girls thin? Where is that gonna pull from? So it's gonna pull track and field, lacrosse, softball.
Yeah, I think this, yeah, Laura Pommerisi said that something like fifty-two percent of the of our girls participate in spring sports already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or something like that. Right. And now are we gonna end up with less lacrosse players or whatnot?
Right.
Well, I know there was a push, um, to start this, this spring. That's not possible simply because it wasn't budgeted for. We, our budget process, as the board knows, starts, uh, in the end of November and is completed, um, at least collection-wise information to Mister Cruz, um, around by January, by the, by the beginning of January and then we approve it in, um, April, right? So, everything that was budgeted for this year is already done.
Thank you. Any other questions? Moving on to our agenda, um, if there's anyone that would like to come to the podium to speak on anything that we are voting on, on the agenda, please come up to the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Being done. Moving on to discussion items, new and old business. Does anyone have anything they would like to? I, I have one thing that I, um, our V Mac Municipal Alliance is setting up for April third. Uh, a speaker to come to our school district, uh, Chris, Chris Harren. I don't know if anyone has heard about him, but he was just at Ramsey High School last week, so I went to his present, his evening presentation. So he's gonna be doing the same here. He's gonna come talk to our seniors on, during the day, not our seniors, our all our students at the high school during the day. And then in the evening on April third, it will be a community event here as well for parents to attend. I was blown away by his, I mean, he was, his story. Um, he was a professional basketball player. He went to Boston College, then went to Fresno State. He got, um, hooked on drugs and his life story and how he lost everything and it's really just incredible. So apparently at Ramsey High School, when he spoke to the students, um, I was speaking to a mom from the, from the high school. She said the students just, you could hear a pin drop. And that's how it was when he did the presentation for the community as well. So hopefully back on, on April third, we could get a good turnout. It was really inspiring and his story was just really, he has YouTube, he has a documentary. Um, he played for the Celtics, I believe, as well and, but his, yeah, yeah, he's, um, he has a foundation in Boston as well. So his story, his name is Chris Harren, but, um, and I, I know my son read about him. One of the summer readings when my son was in high school or middle school, he read the book, um, Basketball Junkie, I think it was called. So it was a really good presentation. So I'm thank you to the V Mac for funding that because I, you know, it's just something that's really good to have.
Mrs. Prisco, I know he is I, I know he is, uh, as you mentioned, a pretty, uh, heavy in the influencer, um, area with a lot of YouTube videos. Is there anything we can do? To amplify the coming of his presentation by posting some of those links?
Definitely, um, the woman that is, works for him, um, Jenny, she will be getting everything to V Mac for us to filter out. So starting hopefully in January, though they have information, so we could really get that out. He did say, um, at the, you know, the community event, he goes to all over and he sees the auditorium and there's so many empty seats. And it's, it's always like that. Um, so hopefully we could get a better turnout. There were a lot of people that were there that just kind of follow him. There were families there and parents there from the community, but a good percentage of the people that were in that auditorium that evening were people who just follow him. So hopefully we could really spread the word through V Mac and through here and get it out so we could have a good turnout that night. It's an important message.
It is an important message and I also, um, I didn't mention it because we don't have a date yet, but Diane Grossman of Mallory's Army. Um, for those that don't remember, Mallory Grossman, uh, died by suicide after being bullied, um, in twenty seventeen. Um, and as a result of Verona, um, I said Verona, Verona Strong? Verona Strong, um, uh, the cornhole competition, the annual cornhole competition, uh, donated to Mallory's Army and as a result, um, Diane Grossberg, uh, Grossman is coming here to speak to our students at middle school and high school and will also be doing an evening for parents. Soon as we get the, we wanted her to be here doing H I B Anti-Bullying Week, but she's booked. Um, so as soon as we get the dates, we'll get those out to the community.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any, anyone else? Yeah. Anything on correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay. Moving on to our resolutions, I need a motion, please, to approve resolutions uh, for personnel, Resolutions A one through A eleven.
I moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prisella, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Farrar. Any discussion?
Just have a question about A four. That's just something I haven't seen before.
Oh, yeah. Let me explain what that is. So, um, we pay, uh, uh, an hourly rate to, uh, one of two different agencies for paraprofessionals. Um, it's significantly more expensive to pay the agency than it is to pay our paras, uh, our own paras and, um, we, there's a, an agreement that they can't come and work for us, even if they're placed here unless we pay a fee. So ultimately twenty-five hundred dollars is a lot less expensive over the cost of the year than paying the agency. They're hourly and, uh, this parish been with us for a while, wants to work as a, on Team Verona. So, uh, we're bringing her over, uh, with that one-time fee to swing. Right. That's, yeah. This is the first time that I, at least in my, my time here.
Mister Cruz, if you could please call roll?
Yes, uh, Mrs. Prisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mister Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our resolutions. For education, I need a motion to approve Resolutions B one through B seven. Motion by?
So moved.
By Mrs. Farrar, seconded by?
I'll second.
Mrs. Prisella, are there any discussions?
Um, just can, can I get a little more? I, I know we have a link on it, but, um, to hear in our own words on B two.
Uh, what would you like to know?
Sorry, um, just, uh, what do we, uh, what are we looking to achieve on the, uh, back-to-school evaluation program? And what do we do with that information?
I'm gonna have to jump to my backup.
Apologies for putting you on the spot.
It's okay. I may not be able to answer you now. There's, yeah. Can we come back to that?
Sure.
That, if we have a student who has, um, they believe is a danger to themselves or other and needs?
Yeah, they, yeah, they provide clearances, but I just wanted to make sure, cause we also got a grant from, uh, from Rutgers. I want to just make sure I'm talking about the same thing, cause we have two things on the agenda tonight. So, um, the district, um, when we need behavioral health, first, for the post, for the most part, Care Plus can also do clearances for our students in their in-house, but there are times when we have to send a student out, uh, for a risk assessment and clearance. And, um, that's just agreement we have with St. Clair's.
Thank you.
Mister Cruz, if you could please call roll?
Yes. Uh, Mrs. Prisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mister Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to athletics and co-curricular, I need a motion to approve Resolutions C one through C four. So move, motion by Mrs. Prisella, seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mister Boone. Any discussions?
I love that we have a book club.
And a fishing club. And a fishing club. I love that we have a fishing club too. My neighbor down the street's been fishing since he's like two. And he has his own Instagram reel. He's in the middle school. So, yeah. I love watching his reels. This is great. These are great.
Yes, they're on.
Um, did we?
Yeah. Motion, yeah.
Motion, okay. Sorry. Mister Cruz, if you could please call roll?
Mrs. Prisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mister Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. There is nothing for facilities. Moving on to finance, I need a motion to approve Resolutions E one through E two. Motion by Mister Boone, seconded by, seconded by Mrs. Prisella. Are there any discussions? Mister Cruz, if you could please call roll?
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our governance and policy, I need a motion, please, to approve resolutions F one through F three. Motion by Mrs. Brazella, seconded by
I'll second.
Mrs. Farrar, are there any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll?
Mrs. Brazella? Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Of the bug?
I was writing that policy and scratching.
Uh moving on to our agenda, we're gonna open up the podium to public comments. If you have anything you would like to discuss, please come up to the podium, you have three minutes and please just state your name.
Hi, Arizona Kaufman, I'm Lock Drive. Um I just have two questions, if you can um just refresh my memory on a couple of things, or two separate topics. Um one is regarding the safety committee that was formed on the board, I believe that um when the individual tried to enter HBW, there was a lot of concern about the safety measures being taken place and I believe there was a committee put in place from the board, if I'm mistaken, please let me know. But I wanted to know, just if you could just refresh, who was on it, what was the goal? And you know, what's been done to date with that committee, what have they done? And what will they continue to do? That was one question. The other question is regarding um the housing, the houses structure at HBW. I'm going to be having my first child enter HBW next year and I just wanted to know um basically, even at a high level, why we have the houses at HBW? And my understanding is that house structure may be removed, or I think previously at another meeting, I think it was just mentioned very casually that maybe like fifth and sixth graders might be combined, or there might be a different structure of the housing, so I'd like to know for the next year, do you know how that structure will be? And if not, when will a decision on that be made? Thank you.
So the safety committee um is made up of Mrs. Farrara and Mrs. Brazella. Um their goal was to um review our safety plans and uh all of our safety policies. And ensure that we're providing professional development to our staff in in all things safety and security. And to date, we have reviewed our um safety and security plans and all of the safety policies. And I am uh in the process of securing the State Department of Homeland Security slash NJ uh Department of Education and that's really the Office of School Preparedness. To come up when they have, they only have four people in the state, so when they have uh to come up and do an audit um and actually put us into drills and see how we do, that's the next step. The goal is to ensure that we have safe and secure schools.
You just piggyback, because you did meet with the company that
I did.
That um produces
The land
The other um items that right that the school in Georgia Georgia used
Yes, in Georgia.
To um lock down their facility when they had um a intruder.
Yes, and um Mr. Bellage also met with another company that offers that same um similar product. We're looking to see if there's anybody else, because that product was missing a GPS component. Which would be very helpful, which is why I think the other was so cost prohibitive. And the house structure at HBW, um uh I I can't answer why we have it, it's been here longer than I've been here. It was a structure that Dr. Di Nosio was familiar with, because he came to us from Ridgewood where they had it. Um it is, um it does allow the current house structure, the main benefit of it is that it allows for true teaming. Which um is unusual uh in New Jersey middle schools um to to really get to true teaming because of the cost of the, of that particular um structure. So as a result, um we are spending a lot of money um on salaries that we may be able to provide better services across the district if we were to go to a more traditional non-house structure or a modified house structure at HBW. The other component that um caused me to take a look at this is that our students in fifth grade, um most fifth grades are not in middle school, they're in elementary school and they have an elementary school uh structure. Um and our students in Verona are in middle school, not because anyone thought that they should be in middle school, but we didn't have room in our elementary school, so we moved them into the middle school. And for a short time, uh I do know they were, they were utilizing an elementary types um schedule uh in the middle school and I don't know when that changed, but it did change and now our fifth graders are uh following the same type of schedule as um the sixth, seventh and eighth to 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 some extent, there's a couple of small differences, however, um the state suggests ninety minutes of language arts instruction a day and our students get forty-five. Um by by following a middle school structure rather than the elementary school sort of structure, so I I do know that we are in the uh in the end pro- uh progress, process of um coming up with a replacement schedule for next year where the fifth and sixth grades will look more like an elementary, uh they will change teachers. Um not as often as they do now, but there will be some changing of classes, but they will get more instruction in math and language arts. And um in seventh and eighth grade, their schedule will look more um like a junior high school and preparing them for um coming over to the high school. So uh I it's not gonna be a, like an Olmstead and Carnegie, it will probably be grouped more of fifth and sixth grade teachers on a team and seventh and eighth grade teachers on a team. You're moving with everyone from one grade to another, yes. Correct, yes. Thank you.
Also, just um two things, one to just kind of circle back to the safety committee, when it was originally brought up. I think it's also just so that we can continue to keep our finger on the pulse, to make sure that we're kind of um having these meetings, having these conversations um and really exploring all of our options as a district. I know um next week we'll be at New Jersey School Board Association and there are a plethora of really great courses or seminar, I don't know what exactly they are, sessions, work sessions, we have lectures, they're all different things, but all around security. Um so I'm looking forward to kind of seeing um what is happening across the state, what recommendations are being made, because as we know the recommendations often change, so I I do think that, you know, just by looking through the plan, the work that was done so far is great and it's just continuing to keep our finger on the pulse. The other thing that I just wanna, I wanna ask that the house structure reminded me, what, when we're thinking about the fifth and sixth grade, is it at all possible to consider um like different bell schedules or one we're thinking about, I don't know if this is even an option?
There will be different bell schedules.
Great, yeah, so I love that.
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
You are the best, thank you so much. And I meant to bring that up and then now it just reminded me, because this is what I, in the middle of the night, god, bell schedules, okay.
Yes.
Thank you so much, it's the truth, that's how it happens, okay, thank you.
And and just for what it's worth, I think your description of the logic behind uh your predecessors uh implementing this about ten years ago is pretty much spot on for what they were trying, if if my, if my ever failing memory serves, I think that that aligns.
That's the, that's the current plan, we actually were gonna try to implement it this year, um but moving from a forty-five minute block to a ninety minute block, we want to provide our teachers, we wanted to provide our teachers with some PD this year, so that they're able to effectively teach in a larger block.
Hi, um, sorry, uh Jessica Chapman Lim, um that actually brought up, I just had a comment regards that, I also have something else I planned to ask. Um I have a fifth grader and I was very apprehensive, but I actually think it's going very well, so. The switching of classes, I just wanted to say, um and the team aspect has worked well for us, because we, you know. Um but um question I have of something that came up last week and I just wanted to make sure I had this correct. Um the Pomptonian contract ends this, with this school year, um and then what's the timeline for the booking at that and reevaluating or considering national school lunch and all those other things?
Yeah, so, so um that's actually a great question, it opens up my report for for the next board meeting. Uh so the national school lunch, um we're evaluating uh one of the things that we're looking at is evaluating uh increases in our eligible student population. At this time, as of today, which is actually cut off for the state October fifteenth. Uh we only have, we're still at one percent, so for the last uh three years since I've been in Verona, um uh going on to the fourth, uh it's, we, we've been hovering one percent. So that's about twenty-four students, twenty-four, twenty-five, I think right after COVID, we probably had the highs, it was about thirty students um out of uh twenty-four hundred students, so we haven't seen a, a real, you you know, the trending upward yet. Um but we still haven't received uh the um the amount of the, the families are coming in from the developments um being built in um Verona, so there's still uh a a time piece to it for us to assess that. Uh the National School Lunch Program, we could apply every year. There's an opening every year and it has to be done before April or no later than mid-April, um so that's one, and then the Pomptonian. Usually that, that's a five-year contract, uh it could be less, I think the the shortest amount of time is uh three years. Uh but that RFP will be in the spring, so our goal is to uh put an RFP out, it's usually up for thirty days. And we open it up to basically all uh food service providers, they will actually um provide a proposal. The, the, a board or subcommittee will, will be able to participate and and actually evaluate and then assess um you know, which, which food provider is gonna be able to uh be the best fit for Verona based on that evaluation.
Can I just make one comment too, um when you're not in the National School Lunch Program, uh families that would qualify for uh free and free and reduced, actually, there's no reduced lunch, right, it's all free now, free lunch. Have to actually apply for it where they would automatically be enrolled, so if we shift to the National School Lunch Program, we'll automatically go up in percentage, because there are people that are not applying. Um for whatever reason, probably many different reasons, um and just because you're automatically enrolled doesn't mean you have to take the benefit. But I I do know that if we were in the National School Lunch Program, we would have a higher percentage of students, which ultimately um does weirdly, it's, I'm gonna say benefits and don't take it the wrong way, but it allows us to qualify for other titles, title funds um that can be used for instruction.
Thank you, that was my follow-up question, because I was wondering about the how enrollment for that works, because that is kind of more automatic based on um qualifying things, okay. Um than applying, because I think sometimes people don't know, as a child, we qualified for reduced lunch, but we didn't know till many years into that, you know, process, so, but thank you for that information.
Thank you, anyone else like to come up?
Piggyback one second onto Mr. Cruz, it today is the, the cutoff for the state, but if there is something that happens in a family and they, a month from now, six months from now, feel that they, they would qualify, please reach out um to Mr. Cruz and he will set you up if he needs to. Um just because it's a deadline, it's not a hard and fast deadline for us, so.
For the national.
Uh so now, for us to report to the uh New Jersey Department of Agriculture for just like the numbers, as far just for the recording, so they, they recorded, so even if so, um to uh Mrs. Brazella's point, if there's a hardship case even a week from now, that wouldn't stop us from saying, yes, you know, um the board is gonna sponsor your lunch for uh this academic year, uh so that's something that we, we do um provide ongoing. Uh the other piece, I believe the town has a, a child fund, um the uh Verona uh Community Center also is a great resource for families um ongoing, um and definitely in times of need. Um I believe um uh Mary Mary Farrell, uh she, she's actually a, a, a great contact person at the Community Center that um is a wealth of resources for any families here in Verona that, that just wants to give her a call, stop by and then have a conversation with her.
So I have a quick question to um. This October fifteenth deadline, I know that Ms. Brazella and Ms. Prisco sent a letter to, I think Assemblyman, just Assemblyman. Um because we did, didn't have our numbers in yet for the Camco project, which we obviously still don't. So right now, we are currently, the district is paying out of our budget, right? And we were not able to, we didn't have any of those numbers, so let's say in January, we have a hundred students that come in who now qualify for free and reduced lunch. We, is that, is it true that then at that point, we can, have to continue to pay out of our budget, because we would have missed the deadline? So this is why, just I think it's really important, especially for the public, to know that this is the reason that we have been having these conversations, because although it may seem like we're having a lot of conversations about school lunch, it's really budgetary conversations about the impact that it will have on our budget and ultimately on the school, um and it's not, I just wanna be clear, it's not because new, our children are coming in, it's because we need the money to fund the needs. Um so I just wanted to clarify that, you know, mid-year, we would still be in that situation, because now we're looking into twenty-five, twenty-six for any type of funding, for any free and reduced lunch or grants or anything that we'd be able to get. Um thank you.
Since we're going in, back into confident, we're going into confidential, we didn't have it, do I close out the meeting now or do I just? Okay, I need a motion to go into confidential session. Motion by Mrs. Brazella, seconded by Mr. Boone. Aye. All in favor, aye. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Confidential session, so you can feel good about